Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to welcome all who are in attendance tonight viewing online or listening online. We'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded in both audio and video format. As always, there is a public comments section. If you're in the room, please sign up on the sheet at the executive assistance desk. If you're on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature that's available on the app. Each member of the public that wishes to speak shall provide their name and address. And we'd ask that you direct the comments to the board only. You have a maximum of five minutes to speak. This is a reminder that all comments made in this meeting are public. We caution any visitor not to disclose any confidential account information, nor disclose any information about an account that is not in your name. Staff is unable to provide individual account information or history in an open meeting for confidentiality reasons. Members of the public may also call or email BPU with questions or concerns. Tonight's agenda and presentations may be found on the BPU website on the Board Meetings tab. If you are using Zoom this evening, they'll be on your screen. So a reminder, this is a business meeting of the Board of Directors. We will conduct the meeting accordingly. Following rules apply to this meeting. Every person in this room will act respectfully toward each other. Personal attacks and accusations toward any person will not be tolerated. State your specific issue or question to the board only. Attendees shall refrain from side discussions or individual commentary that interferes with speakers or other attendees at this meeting. If side discussions are necessary, please take them outside of the boardroom. If any of the above rules are breached during the meeting, individuals are subject to removal from the boardroom. I am Rose Mulvaney Henry, Member at Large, Position Three, and I'm the current Board President. Other members of our board and staff include Bill Johnson, General Manager, David Haley, Member at Large, Position Two, Tom Groneman, Second District, and the current Board Vice President, Bob Mylan, First District, and current Board Secretary, Jeff Bryant, Third District, Mary Gonzalez, Member at Large, Position One, and Angela Lawson, our Acting Chief Counsel. Remind everyone, please put your phones on silent. And a reminder that there are microphones throughout the room. They are very sensitive and can pick up and record comments anywhere in the room. Before we begin our meeting, I'd ask that you please rise and join me in plying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. May I have a roll call, please, for our meeting?
Roll call. Mylan?
Yeah.
Mulvaney Henry?
Here.
Bryant?
Here.
Gonzalez?
Here.
Haley?
Present.
Oh, Groneman.
Sure.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Before I ask for a motion to approve this evening's agenda, I'll ask if there are any corrections or suggestions for edits. Hearing none?
Move to approve.
I second.
Motion to approve this evening's agenda has been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mylan?
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Bryant?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Groneman?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Before I ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the work session of September 20th. Oh, my bad, we didn't have a work session. Excuse me. Before I ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of September 20, 2023, I will ask if there are any corrections that need to be made. Hearing none?
This is Jeff. I move to approve.
This is Tom. I second.
Motion to approve the minutes of the regular session for September 20, 2023 have been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mylan?
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Bryant?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Groneman?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, turn the meeting over to you, sir.
Thank you, Madam President. Chris, look to you. Is there anyone signed up to speak tonight? Rob, same question. Is there anyone online which to speak tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then go ahead and close the public comments section and move it to the General Manager Staff Report. So first on the agenda is our August 2023 financials. I'll ask Laurie Austin to update the board on where we are as of August.
Good evening. We'll review where we stand through August of this year. First slide takes a look at where we're at from a year-to-date perspective, looking at our electric usage. We are seeing our residential below levels of where we were at last year at this time. Our industrial is also below our 2022 levels. We are seeing an increase in commercial usage through year-to-date. And so overall, our usage is down about two and a half percent. So residential is down about 3%. Commercial's up about 1%, and our industrial is down about 8%. Looking at our water usage year-to-date, in total, we're up slightly, about almost 2% with residential and commercial being above our 2022 levels. Industrial is down slightly compared to 2022. So residential up 2%, our commercial is up 4%, while our industrial is down about 1%. Looking at our revenue just for the month of August, comparison to where we were a year ago, we're down about 8% overall. Our electric revenues are down and our water revenues are up in comparison to 2022. From a budget to actual comparison, our budget is up overall about 2.6%. And it's also up in electric as well as water. So electric is up about 2.5%, while water is up 3%. Looking at our revenues from a year-to-date perspective, all, both electric and water and combined, we're up in comparison to 2022 by about 2.2% on a combined basis. From a budget to actual perspective, we're up overall about 4%. Electric was up 4%, while water was up 3%. So some of the categories there, customer classes, so residential on the electric side was up to 2 million. Our commercial is up healthy 8.9 million. Industrial is just up slightly, 150,000, while schools is up about 660,000. We are seeing our wholesale sales below our projected so far with our ability to make sales in the wholesale market are not what we had expected. On the water side, we're up 3%. Residential about 500,000, commercial about 660,000. Industrial about 106,000, and our wholesale is up about 160,000. So in comparison, just looking at the graph, you know, our residential is about 35% of our overall revenue, and our commercial is about 40%. So those are our two major categories there. Looking at our operating expenses just for the month of August, both electric, water, and combined, we're down in comparison to 2022 levels. Overall, is down 5.7%. From a budget to actual comparison, we are seeing expenses up on the electric side by around 15%. And then our water is down compared to budget by about 10%. So on a combined basis, we're up about 11.2%. Looking at our operating expenses year-to-date, electric, water, and combined, we're above 2022 levels by about 6%. While budget to actual, we're seeing our electric up about 6%. We're seeing water down around 6.5%. And overall, combined, we're down about 4.3%. We look at our expenses, removed depreciation to look at just our basic OEM expenditures we're seeing in comparison to 2022, up 5.5% while our electric was, is up compared to 2022. Water is up as well compared to 2022. From a budget to actual, electrics expenses are up compared to budget while our water is down compared to budget. Overall, on the combined basis, we're up about 4.7%. On our electric side, you can see we're up on our purchased power about 1.6 million. We are down on our fuel about 5.6 million. Production is up about 3.4 million. And then TND, GNA are both down. TND is 2.8, GNA is about 1.6 million. On the water side, all water categories are down below their budget with production about 950,000. TND about 470,000, and our GNA is around 300,000 below budget. Looking at our change in net position for the month of August, we projected to have a positive 9.8 million, about 9.9 million. We're on a combined basis, so we're at an 8.4 million year-to-date. Electric projected to be at 9 million, so we're right around 7 million on the electric side. Water had a positive 840, almost 850,000 positive, and they're at a 1.4 million positive. Looking at our change in net position on a year-to-date basis, we projected for our budget to be a positive 22 million. Electric projected to be about 18.7 million. Their actual is about 17.2 million. Water had a positive 3.4 million, and they're a positive 6.6. So we're at a 23.8 on a combined basis compared to 22 million in budget. This just looks at our tenure trend. Looking at 23, so the revenue represents about 220.7 million. The expenses, which also includes our non-operating expenses, which would be our, like, our interest on debt was included in there, so we're about 203.5 million. So the net of that is about 17.2. That's where we are in our change in net position. On the water side, revenues are about 36.1 million. Our operating and non-operating expenses are about 29.5. So our net is about 6.6 million in the positive. So our average, excuse me, our average daily collections for the month of August were about 1.7, almost 1.8 million per day. Comparable, a little bit lower than where we were a year ago and comparable to where we were in 2021. So we are expecting to be around in that level going in the next month or two as our summer revenues continue to come in. This is our historical monthly cash, so we had a very positive month. We had a positive 9.5 million. We had a good, we had a good month in July, and so part of that is we were continuing to sell power on the market. We continue to collect our under collection of the ERC. And as Andrew stated in the work session there, that we've collected almost about 13 of the 14 million through September projected. And we also did receive our 5.1 million reimbursement from KDT for expenditures on the water projects. So we had carried that for a few months. So overall, the impact to that is our days cash went from 67 days in last month to 82 days for August. So we made good, good progress. We look at our average 12-month rolling, what a day's cash is worth. So we've been averaging about $630,000 a day from the last 12 months. This is just our historical look at days cash on hand. It shows where we're at today, 82. So it's been almost two years, a little less than two years since we had reached up into the 80s. So that's positive. And this graph just demonstrates that our days of cash went up as well as our change in cash going up, so at an increase of about $9.5 million. Some of our balance sheet items that we, we look at each month. So our fuel inventory is starting to come back down to where we were a year ago. So we've been burning our coal on a pretty consistent basis. So we're at 7.1 million of inventory on the ground. Fuel, we did. Finally, some transformers came in, so we were able to draw down on our 2016 C bond issue. So we took about a, drew down about a half a million dollars, so we still have about $230,000 left. And then our, we still have remaining 830,000 on our 2028. Looking at our capital spending, so we have a 2023 budget of about almost $61 million. We have 51% of that money remaining through August. Electric has expended 17.6 million of their 30.6 million. Water has expended about 9.7 of their 24.7. And common has expended about 2.1 of their almost 5.2 million. So we've spent 29.5 million of the 60.5. Some of the projects, major projects down below our underground feeders in the Rosedale area, about 2.5 million. So we, our underground and overhead continue work in that area. So combined is almost about 2.3 million. We still have, are doing work on our pole inspection replacement in our distribution system, so it's about almost a million. I think the burner coal nozzle replacement program or project is about 2.5 million, and I think it is complete now. Water looks at its system improvement valves and leaks replacements, and they spent about 2.2 million, 2 million even. And then the major project the water's undertaking is the Argentine 7 million gallon tank. And they've spent about 5.1 million. So our debt coverage, the top part, looking at it with pilot. So on a combined basis, we're at 2.81 with electric being 2.70 times and water being 2.2 times. Below is looking at our debt coverage without pilot, so we're at a combined of 2 point, almost 2.1. Water's at 1.97, I'm sorry, electric's at 1.97, and water's at 1.74. You have any questions?
I know you've answered this before, but back on the capital improvements for the bond issue, I think it was the bottom one. We had more money.
18.
Interest.
Interest. Okay, it's interest.
So whereas it's sitting, it's sitting with our trustee. They invest our money, whatever we have in our construction fund. So with interest rates going up, that...
So we had, we got more money this year than we had last year, and it was due to the interest rates, and we hadn't spent anything.
Right, right.
Would it for approval?
Yes, please.
So we'd like for the board to consider approving our August 23 financials. I move to approve the August 23 financial statement.
A motion to approve the August 2023 financials has been seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mylan?
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Bryant?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Groneman?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we've got a lot of software systems and round customer service and IT going on, quite a bit of work going on at one time. So Jerry's here to present a part of that and trying to bring some of the other conversations together in this PowerPoint to kind of give the board an idea of kind of what we're doing and how all of this is interrelated to many other communication platforms across, across the utility.
Jerry? Thank you, Bill. My conversation here is about technology driving customer experience improvements. We can't do it alone. We've been working with all the divisions at BPU to undertake a number of these projects in this year. So we're talking about improving the IT operating model. And the operating model I'm speaking of is how we work as a company, how we work in IT, how we plan the work, how we build or design the work, all the requirements that's needed, how we build the work, how we test it, how we train everyone, and how we get it implemented with no issues that go live. That's the ambition. Wherever we think we're at, we want it to improve. So this discussion today is about me talking about some of these systems that are going live this year, what it means to our customers, what it means for our internal customers. And it's not going to be just me talking. I think for the first time, we're having Robert give a presentation. He's actually going to demo these tools. So he's not the, as you know, he's not the only fellow that sits in the back of the room, and that's all he does. He actually manages all the project managers to make these things come to life. So with that, here's the agenda. We're going to talk about the IT operating model, how we make things work, how we have a transformation that's underway here at BPU to increasing value to our customers. When you apply for a federal government job, they often go situation, action that you took and result. I coined that same term here. Earlier this year, current customer technologies, touchpoints, processes were all reviewed. They were assessed, we came up with requirements, and a plan was developed with all the different business units that are affected, which I'll go over in a second. The action in this collaborative manner with IT, working with all the other divisions and a team-based approach, we were only focused on specifics, but an overall digital and people transformation, people, processes, and technology. The expected result we'll have this year is we should have an improved customer experience across a wide range of applications and processes, internal customers and external. We're going to have a demo. Robert's going to give it. Okay, so I saved the best for last. But first, here are all the different divisions we worked with in all these projects. It'll really show you the things we've done and the things we're doing for them. Customer service, finance, on payments, accounting, billing, meter data management, the Canta customer information system, how we do payments. The meter shop was involved on both electric and water, and IT was involved. We have meetings frequently. We move the ball forward. We have some systems integrators and some contractors that give us a hand on this. With that being said, as how we work together, let's talk about what these interactions are. As you know, customers, for the most part, really don't talk to us on the phone all the time. They only interact with us as we see it in the use of electricity and water through the meters. The top half of this slide is we'll go over all the things, the touchpoints, that we have with customers today. The bottom half, there's going to say how we make it work on the applications that are being changed, improved, and totally upgraded. Okay, so let's walk through them in a very fast pace. You see that we have a lot of touchpoints with customers. The first, as you know, last year, we put in a bill print, whole new bill print. You all see it? That was a successful project. The customers can see the bill. They can fake their payments in the bill, mail the bill in. A lot of things that went on with that project that's still being supported by these systems will be improved. We have a mail payment program. We have kiosk. I think we've got like 30 kiosks in the area that Janice's team manages. We've got the phone, the interactive voice response system. We've got BPU online where you can make payments. You can do a lot of inquiries in here. Your customer self-service portal is in there. We have two-way texting with the text power solution that we put in place. Now we're going to have two-way communications with the text power solution. We have an online service app for our plumbers and developers who can get on there and request service through item number seven. On the top, we've got, you can't really see it there, it's Flex Pay. We have that way in which we could have customers with our fixed payment plans on Flex Pay. We have Dropbox, and we have an Audition app. These 10 things, there's a lot more of these interactions we have with customers. We all have to have systems that support these and people to staff it and monitor it and govern it. Let's talk about the systems that we're actually implementing. We have three major systems and adding a fourth. The first one I'll talk about, an unsung hero here, is the communications protocols from the meters into our data centers and into our applications. It's called a head-in system. It's a honeywell system, a very robust system. It needed to be upgraded. I'll go over what the functions of that are in the next slide. Next, we took a major project, a very large project for IT. It's the meter data management system. Think about electric meters. Every 15 minutes, sending a trove of data into our data center. Every meter, every 15 minutes, day after day, month after month, it's a huge data store that has all the data in there for kilowatts, kilo, kilowatt-hours, temperature, sensing whether it's theft or not, a whole bunch of activities that the meter data management collects and analyzes that is ready for internal staff to do their analyses and ready for customers to be able to take a look at it through the systems that we're going to show you in a moment. The third is we are upgrading our customer information system. The Kiantis system, that's been around for quite a long time. We're doing a major upgrade this year. It's going to be going live very soon. I'll go over the dates of these systems in a second. These three are the backbone of our meters, meter data management, and our customer information system, the customer service reps. Many of the folks in this room here, their staff, use these systems daily. Let's talk about the one we're going to demo here. It's the fourth major system. And it's coming in on the top there, the MyMeter solution. MyMeter is a customer portal. Right now, we've got a customer portal. It's not so great. It's not so interactive. It's probably 15, 20-year-old technology. The customer information system we plan on using is going to be very reliable, very user-friendly. And it's meant, it's designed to work with residential customers, commercial customers, and industrial customers. It's a very state-of-the-art tool, and we'll demo it in a second. These four yellow boxes or ovals there are the four major systems we're putting in place and constantly reviewing the ones, items, 1 through 10 above to make improvements. Let's talk about the new systems, why we're upgrading these new systems. The head-in system. We want a better, more reliable, more user-friendly customer experience using these technologies. So we're upgrading the head-in system to make sure it can carry all of the information that's needed from all the interval reads. It's reliable. It's got compliance embedded in it. Lot of speed with these systems, all this data coming in from all the 65,000 meters in electric, 50,000 in water meters coming in every hour, every 15 minutes for electric. We're going to get more out of our smart grid investments, a very reliable, robust backhaul of communications going into our meter data management system. The meter data management is a tier-one solution. Oracle, state-of-the-art. It can conduct smart grid analyses. It has good validation, estimation, and editing tools with it. Can do service order management and a lot of visualizations for our staff. We can see what's going on with the meters when the customers give us a call, give Janice's team a call, okay? Customer information system. We had a big training session here. We went over our processes with customer service and with finance. It's gonna help customer service reps on interacting with the customers. Got traceability and what interactions took place and in the transaction ease with all of our transactions, okay? So let's talk about My Meter uh in a second and I'll go over what those uh uses are in a moment. But we're gonna go live with head-in system probably at the end of this month. I know it says November, but I think the date is October eighteenth, just two weeks away. So this isn't grandiose plans in the future. We're nearly at the finish line with all four of these projects. Meter data management will go live in December. The customer information system goes live this month. And the My Meter solution will also go live at the same time as the meter data management. So on My Meter, it's very easy to use. You'll see that demoed by Robert. It's designed for industrial, commercial and residential customers. So it's ease of use for customers that that are also business customers. It's state-of-the-art technologies by accelerated innovations, awful awesome often called AI. Not to be confused with artificial intelligence, but the AI vendors providing a branded name for My Meter with BPU logos on it. It looks and feels like all of our customer apps. It's got great self-service functionality, very customer-friendly, is very comprehensive. We're trying to meet the customers where they want to meet and talk to us with all of these touchpoints that were shown on the previous slide. I'm gonna show you some some of these graphics here. Robert will go into more detail and show you that it's actually how it works. Nice thing about it, it uses HTML five technologies, which that means, that means you can use it on your desktop or you can use it on your mobile device. You can download it from the Apple Store or Google Play Store. On the left, you uh of the mobile application, you see that's for great user analytics, trends and forecasts. In the middle, mobile app there, it's for billing and auto pay simplified. So you can have multiple accounts there for your business customer. You can have all all of your different meters and different accounts and has quick reporting of service problems so that you have an outage or you have an issue, you got a question to bill. It's quite intuitive. The key features are, it's gonna be enable customer to start service. You can stop service. And if you wanna do both and stay within the territory, it's called transfer service. You could pay your bills, including prepay for convenience if offered by us. It configures alerts such as outages, leak suspected, abnormally high usage. You get notification on text power or on My Meter or both. You can enroll in conservation and efficiency and demand and response if we choose and nearly anything that we wanna do to put in the hands of us. All right, so these are the five things, major things that it does. We hope that it reduces call volumes, questions from customers. We had JD Power as a scoring customer satisfaction. We know that we would score better because customers like this tool. We've seen it used elsewhere. And when we evaluated all the options in front of us, the evaluation team looked at all of the different tools that we'd have that do something like this, as unanimous that we should select the My Meter solution. Customers will be more informed. We hope they'll be more engaged. They'll understand and manage their own accounts in a far easier, far simpler, more intuitive way. We believe customer moments matter and how they interact with us. We wanna take action. We wanna stay updated. We wanna gain insights. Nice thing on the left, Robert, I asked to go over this. The customer service rep, when talking to a customer, will see exactly, they'll impersonate, could they call it? What a customer sees on their mobile device or on their desktop. Our customer service reps and the customer service organization or IT can see what the customer's seeing. So you'd be able to have a conversation on the phone with a customer, knowing what they see and they tell you what they see. It's quite good. Now, with that being said, very quick overview. I wanna have Robert actually show the actual demo of the tool. Robert?
Thank you very much, Jerry. Thank you, Board, for your time this evening. As stated, I am Rob Kemp and I am the project manager and delivery manager in IT, working under Jerry. Um so I will demo our new My Meter Portal tonight. Um this is still in testing and development, so some changes may happen uh between now and go live. But we feel comfortable in presenting uh where we are overall. So with that, I'll go ahead and pull it up here. Get the zoom flipped over as well. All right. So currently, we have two uh portals uh that are Oh, well, thank you. Uh we currently have two password, are two portals uh that are live today. We have customer self-service and um in the web for commercial and industrial customers. Like Jerry said, this will replace both of those. If I don't lock myself out of my account tonight. Oh, that's right. Um this will replace both of those. It will also replace the Energy Engage application that we get through uh Siemens Energy IP, our old MDM solution. So this will be one solution for all customer, for all residential, commercial and industrial customers. The only customers that will not use the new My Meter Portal are the ones that are currently enrolled in Flex Pay. They will continue using the Flex Pay app as they always have. Their bills are calculated on a daily usage um metric where this is really for all postpaid customers that get their bills calculated on a monthly basis. Um so uh as you can see, this is the landing page. Oh, I meant to actually not log in that quickly. That's what I was doing. I apologize. I'm gonna log back out so I can show you. Uh so I wanted to start out here on the login page uh so that you guys could see exactly what customers and uh CSRs would use anytime they were going to access the app. So initially, you can see from the login page, there's the ability for my login and password to go ahead and log in. I can activate Remember Me if I'm using a private computer. Um but if I'm using a public computer as I am now, or if I'm at a library, then I would wanna keep that turned off. We do have a warning in here to explain that to any users that are less technically proficient and don't understand what risks they're using, using a public computer. We also have the ability to reset your own password uh so that customers don't have to call in customer service if they manage to lock themselves out. I could have used this if I uh got it wrong one more time tonight. Uh and then we also have the ability to register for the account. So all customers will have to initially register when we go live with the new portal. These are the seven data elements that they will need to register, which will include their name on their account, their account number, their email. And then they'll need to set a password and a security question and have those ready for them. Um after they register their account, they'll be able to log in. They also have the ability to schedule a new customer move-in directly from the login screen and because they won't have a login yet if they're not a customer. Uh and just like they can on the BPU website, they can go ahead and click Pay Bill and they'll be able to jump out to our payment processor and submit a payment on their account without ever having to log in. Some customers don't wanna log in, but they do like the online payment options. So uh as Jerry said, we're trying to meet the customers where they are and how they want to do business.
Hey, Rob?
Yes.
Um will that have a guest uh bill payment option? Like you don't have to log in at all and if I wanna go pay?
Pay option is, it is a guest bill pay option where you don't need to log in at all.
Okay.
You will need a couple of pieces of information for what account number um and where to send the confirmation. But other than that, you don't need to log in in order to make that payment.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you for the question. Uh so this is the landing page for the administrators. This is what they will see when they will log in. Um I'm going to go ahead and jump into impersonate. So some of the benefits of the impersonate were already mentioned by Jerry. It allows our representatives and our employees here within the utility to see the same thing that the customer is seeing when they log in and start accessing their account. What often happens is the login and they'll have a question either on their bill or on the online screens and they'll call into customer service. It's very beneficial for customer service to be able to see what the question or what's causing them to ask these questions and to be able to help them navigate to where they want to go, right? So they'll be able to actually see the screens and navigate with them. I'm going to go ahead and show uh UG Parks information, just so I don't share any private information from any customers or users in the system. This is all public information. It will so show the addresses and the account numbers, but it's it's not sensitive information. Uh so as you log in, uh just like any other website, there's some basic navigation features along the top bar here. Um the BP logo will always take you home, as will the dashboard. Uh clicking that will just takes you back to the screen. Um you have the ability to set up some common alerts to pay your bill and to make changes to your own account. So we'll start with the alerts features. Um I can come in here and I can set up alerts. Uh initially, it'll just be on email. We will eventually roll out the ability to tie this into our text messaging solution as well, so you can get text alerts on your bills. Um so you can get alerts currently for new bills, past due reminders, anytime you wanna schedule a payment um or a due date is approaching. Uh you also can get some uh usage alerts. For water, it's usually a leak detection, uh high or low usage. Uh for electric, it is higher or low usage um on those. Uh and then you can set a usage threshold either on a daily, weekly or monthly basis and go ahead and get communications that way. You switch over to View Pay Bill, you can see the billing history and download your historical bills from this screen. Uh you'll also have the ability to enroll in paperless billing by clicking on Manage uh bill delivery. Uh you can manage your auto pay from this screen if you wanna go ahead and enroll in auto pay. Uh and that can use your credit card, ACH um or any of your standard payment methods, just like today. Uh and they've got the ability to request utility services. So this would be enrolling in the equalized payment plan uh or anything like that. Uh they can also go ahead and select their account and and make a payment. Uh you'll see this particular account just because it is a a UG account is on bank payment only, um but that's just specific to this account. With that, I'll go ahead and exit out of the top banner, which is really for the user level uh options. And we'll go down into the actual data for for the usage on the account. So I'm going to collect our, I'm just going to select the first one here, which is a good example of an electric count. You can also see that if you are a commercial customer or even a residential customer that has multiple accounts, you will have a select property option up here and it will show all of the different accounts and meters that are tied to your account. And you can come in and manage any one of them from this view. You can also set up uh meter groups where you merge multiple ones together, so they're all in a common view. This is very beneficial for uh industrial and commercial customers who often have uh multiple account managers managing different facilities and they need to come in and see their individual facilities. While you may have a headquarters corporate level person who needs to come in and see the usage across all of the facility. Uh and the users can manage that on their own by uh adding those additional users of the other facilities and giving them what access they have as far as uh visibility and ability to make changes. So it's a very flexible platform uh is one of the reasons that made us select it when we were doing the RFP. Um so going further down, you'll be able to see the address and the account number. The charts, data and property, we'll go through those uh different options here in a bit, but they're exactly what they say. The charts are the graphical representation down here while the data is access to the to the data behind it that is driving the charts, which you can then also download. And property is the ability for you to provide some additional information on your um home or business. Um and will also guide you towards uh the ability to do an energy audit. Uh so we'll go through those in just a moment, but I wanna continue on uh at this top level first and go down through the charts and then we'll come back up through those. Uh this pay bill option here is the same as the one up here, takes you to the same screen. Um and that's just making it as easy for customers to navigate as possible. Like I said, dashboard and logo always take you back to your home screen. These next three widgets up here in the top right um can be changed out over time and we expect them to constantly be updated. Um but they are just some instructions for users to help introduce them to the new portal and figure out how to do specific items within the portal itself. Uh so the first one here, track changes, is a way for you to be able to set up alert arts, to add markers, I'm sorry, to the chart, which we'll get into more information on markers here in a moment. Um you can also uh go through and set up uh high, low and average temperature alerts. Um and you can have those alerts sent to you uh as we discussed with the setting up looks. Uh now moving down into the actual chart itself, uh you'll see that I have the ability to look at, this is an electric-only account, so they'll have the option to look at electric for their billing totals. Uh and then along the top left, um the hover, just if I hover over these, I can see the data that's behind these charts, right? And I can click into them and actually drill down into that data. Uh I then have the option up here to set the different uh timeframes for uh one year, two year, three years. It's got the wrong uh metrics on it. It looks like they just loaded the third year of data the in the last twenty-four hours. And so that's an error that I'll have to log as a known issue. Um they can also flag the high-low so that it automatically calls out on the graph what the highest and lowest usage is for them. And they can look at their consumption, demand, perhaps knowing what their daily usage of kilowatts isn't useful to them, but they'd rather come in here and see how many dollars they're spending a day. So they can do that and then they can hover over it and actually get the dollars of their daily usage, right? Um they can look at their interval data in fifteen, thirty, hourly, daily, weekly or just on their monthly bills. Um and then they can set the range uh that they want to view data from, either up here at the top with the range selector or down here at the bottom by clicking and dragging uh these filters down at the bottom. Uh all all of those adjust range the same, it's just different ways to access the same data. Um the legend down here will show them if they have multiple meters, they can oh they can overlay them on a single graph. So they can see their usage across different locations. Um and then the last is the ability to add a marker. A marker is something that you would go in and add to your data set because you've made a change in your home and you wanna see how that's going to impact your usage over time. So maybe I've added a sprinkler system or I've installed LED lights and I expect that to start reducing the amount of energy usage that I I'm going to be using. So I can come in here. I can say I want it on the electric graph. I can say the date and time that that change went active. Uh and then add a description, added uh LED lights and add that marker and that marker will show up on the graph to make it easier for me when looking in the future to figure out, okay, when did I make that change and how did my usage change after it? Was it a positive? Was it a negative? Um and then they can also come in and bring those markers markers up. Uh this is a that system, but I'm not going to add any additional markers at this time, but that ability is there. The green graph that you see running through, uh that is daily average temperature readings. Um they have the ability to change that to uh add high, low temperature, precipitation, humidity. Um their usage from last year and their usage from two years ago. They also have the ability to add up to three other data elements for a total of four. Um out of those ones that I've already listed, so I could do high, low and precipitation in addition to the average temperature and I can see what I expected uh my usage to be and how that changes as temperature changes outside. Um they can also come in here and download an image of the graph. If they wanna do that, they can pull it down and pe- and uh different, several different um formats or they can print print the graph from here. Um down along the bottom, uh you'll notice that the weather data is provided by Eris Weather. Um we will do some testing on that to make sure the Eris Weather matches the National Weather Service that is called out in our cold and hot weather policies. That doesn't work. That is a known concern of ours and we will switch over to the National Weather Service or uh NOAA in order to make sure that the graph values match what the hot and cold weather policy values need to be. Uh that is it for looking at the graph data. I'm gonna go ahead and show you some of the um I'm gonna switch over to a different property to show you how it would look on a water uh only account as well, in case there's any questions there. Um it's very similar, as would be expected. Uh you can see one or two years of data has a lot of the same uh values um as far as the overlays and the average temperature and the daily usage and still turn on high lows. Um still do all the same things that I've done before. After that, I can come back up here to data and I can see the data that underpins the actual graph itself. Uh let me switch over to bill by year. You can see more of them. Um I also have the ability to come up here and download the data if I wanna load it into something else uh to do some data uh analysis on it. Um I can come in here and select what what uh columns I want included in there, set the range. Um I can pick my hourly, uh daily, weekly or billing to- I can pick my hourly, daily, weekly or billing totals. And I can choose to either pull it down in a CSV format, which can be used in Excel or any spreadsheet software or the green button format, which is a data analysis format. I don't think that's going to be used a whole lot, but if anybody out there is a data scientist, they would actually prefer that option. With that's pretty much everything in the data field. I will go ahead and hop over now to the property. I'm not going to go too deep into it just to, but I do want to show you what options are out here. So I can pick a nickname. That's helpful for somebody that manages a bunch of different properties so they can keep their different properties straight in their own minds. And then you can come down here and list whether it's an apartment, condo duplex, single family home, townhouse, whatever. As you start making these these selections, you'll notice that I get the ability to come in here and do the energy audit analysis data entry. This is something that we can roll out for like Patricia's group who does the energy audits. So they can start the data collection before the users come into the building to make that that interaction more perfect, more efficient when they actually come in here. And then under property, you can also come and see what markers you've added. And if you've added any markers, you can manage them here by updating them or deleting them. That is pretty much it for all of the data analysis that is inherent to the system. Along the bottom, you'll see that there are just four other options listed. There's contact the board of public utilities. This activates the same contact us screen that is out on our website. Feedback sends feedback directly to AI who would then pass that information on to us if it was about our services or the utilities that we deliver while if it was just on the website or what recommendation that they had for a new feature, AI would keep that information. List of the AI privacy policy. And then there's also the ability to use Google Translate to translate the entire page into other languages. This is how we will support our Spanish speakers in the in the area. And it is tested and maintained by AI, which will take some loading off of BPU staff and making sure that our portal is available in both English and Spanish. And with that, I am through all of the data elements that I wanted to share. Are there any questions or anything you all would like to see?
So Rob, on the weather, you were saying that if we have to, we can switch is the weather that's on there, is that the one that comes with the program? So that's why we're just checking to see.
Integration to a weather service provider and it gets its information from the same National Weather Service. So it should be the same. It just, I'm not comfortable with the word should, so we're gonna test it.
So another thing I noticed on the my meter was that it says you can start service through there, but but wouldn't a person, I'm assuming that by start service, we mean somebody coming into our community that's never lived here before and wanting to begin service, in which case don't they have to go through the whole enrollment process that has a deposit and and everything?
Yes, and that this start service kicks that process off.
Okay.
And it will also have the ability to upload their documents. So their rental agreement or their purchase agreement, if they're a homeowner. They'll be able to add what other users are on the property in the same screens. So we can collect all that and provide all everything so that and then there'll be an integration between my meter and our customer information system to start a service order so that that start, stop, transfer, work order can continue on.
And then if this person is on the phone doing all this and it may take, you know, a point of time from A to B, but if those occur, they can never have to call customer service or anything. They could, you know, if whatever the deposit is, you know, processed it, they'll get a billing that'll say, okay, pay this amount and now you have services and all that straight through with this app only.
So they would log into the start service. So if they were brand new to the to the county and signing up for the first time, they would go in and they could do this sign up for service from the home screen. Submit all their documents and everything else. They would get some email communications back. Once their account has been created, then they they could go and make the payments and claim their account online and do all that. So yes, it is possible for them to get all through all the way through that process without needing call customer service. But if they run into any headwinds along the way, they could always pick up the phone and reach out.
I just want to have a system that's self-contained.
It, Rob is is or Jerry, is there any encryption on data that's uploaded by a customer that's required for sign up?
I don't remember off the top of my head what their specific data security policies were, but I know that there was a data security element to the RFP and they didn't have any issues meeting the requirements. None of the three primary bidders did. So they all met the security requirements. I believe that the data is encrypted at rest. I'm not sure that it's encrypted in motion, but I can take that as a look up, get back to you.
Okay, thanks.
About training and testing.
So I think what you mean is timeline overall. So we've gone through the initial training for the power users, the the train, the trainers. And we are going through the testing process. Testing starts on October the sixteenth and goes for two user acceptance testing cycles. We've already completed system integration testing, although there are a couple of elements and system integrations that still need to be validated. And so we expect that to get done from the sixteenth of October through the end of October. We will do some final assessments and checks in November and get ready for December cut over. So right now, cut over is planned for the second weekend of December.
And how will I, as a customer, know about this?
So we've been working very closely with David Milhoff's group and we will are working on communications that will go out in the bill online through mailers and on BPU dot com. So we will continue communicating that change is coming with them. And then we'll also be able to offer some sessions and some online videos to help them navigate and get registered for their account.
Okay, so the the process that Jeff was talking about earlier, where everything you could do that all online, is that quickly? Or I mean, it's gonna happen?
So the register for service is about four screens. And if you have all of your, all of your documents together, you can get it submitted in under five minutes. It really doesn't take that much time. If you don't have all your documents together, like anything else, you know, however long it takes to get your documents.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you. One of the hallmarks of the implementation, when I said we planned, we designed, we built, we tested, we trained and deployed. A major emphasis for all the business units is that we wanted to have all of the staff trained. And a key feature of the testing is that we not only did the sit testing or the systems integration testing and the regression testing and the functional testing. And our technology team testing, we had user acceptance testing, testing, which provided a lot of training and how all the tools are. So for the meter data management and the Kianta tool and this tool as well, we're really emphasizing training the internal staff to make sure that they're very capable and that we're using all the modules as they were originally designed. It's been a spectacular project. I can't say enough about my team and Jeannetta's team and the meter shops all working hand in hand, all the meetings we have to ensure that we're fulfilling all the requirements, that we're meeting all the needs, that we're actually can implement something that's can be far better than our energy, energy engage platform that we have now. We're pleased with it and thank you for the giving me the opportunity to my team to present. One, one last comment, Jerry, and I don't know whether whether it would be beneficial or not, but but once this is rolled out to customers, especially residential side, much to the idea of like Caprice's team, Patrice's team used to do their energy meetings at like the libraries and stuff, maybe hit some of the libraries around town with like, okay, I'm sixty one years old. I've downloaded what you told me to download, but I'm not getting much out of it because somebody needs to give me a tutorial. So maybe we have either tutorials online or something to make it so that people, we get our value out of this investment. I think that's a great idea, part of the organizational change management for us to be able to get the word out and get people using the tool and provide help where it's needed. I mean, people of all different skill sets are out there. So we, we picked one that we thought was the easiest and most robust. And certainly if you've got a lot of accounts, you're more savvy than somebody who just got a homeowner. That's this is just a nuisance if you have to do something that's hard to do. But if you worked with our start service, our stop service, it's not an easy intuitive tool, the current one. So as with any technology, we aim to make it better. So we'll take that advice and we'll move ahead with that as far as keying the word out to our customers.
Also redirect traffic.
Yeah, yes, go ahead, say that.
We'll also redirect traffic from customer self-service and from MV web directly to this portal automatically. So any customer that tries to access one of the old portals after Bill live will get rerouted to the right portal.
Yeah, I'm assuming that, you know, besides start service, which is probably the hardest thing to do through this module, that just an existing customer is just learning what all the buttons are for so that they're getting their value out of it. The whole idea about setting a set point and everything, you know, if I'm just getting on there, what are the odds I'm going to find that and truly understand it?
Which is why we've got three or four options, things like you pay bill, things like that. There's multiple ways to navigate there. We try to make that as clear as possible. But there will be online resources to help them navigate like I showed in the portal itself and external to the portal. Then we will also send some mailers and some videos out to make it as easy as possible.
We we recognize it's not a small undertaking. Change is hard and we've done a lot of effort in that, but it's not perfect.
And training is continuous. We'll never be done training people on the new portal. We'll continue training them on the current portal up until the day we show it.
We'll circle back and have a conversation on how to get our customers up to speed too. I mean, it's one thing to train our internal staff is a whole different undertake in the train to public. So we'll make sure we take that up, Jeff.
Jerry, as somebody who is an avid user of our current self-service system, I look forward to this update. I'm going to ask you a really tough question though. What's the price tag on this one? I know the train's out of the station, but I still want to know.
We we had a competitive bid. We had one number was up here and we didn't choose that solution. We chose a solution that was forty percent, fifty percent less. I think the number was eight seventy five. And through the negotiations, maybe it shouldn't be public record, but we're able to get the biometer solution as part of it, that that solution with no extra cost. That's phenomenal victory for us. Okay.
You what?
It's a phenomenal victory for us. We got the new meter data management system for less than our current system. And we also threw in the tool for my meter included in the price.
Okay, well, Bill, I'm gonna follow up on that one.
Okay. Any other questions? Bill for that because we pressed hard on the price. Okay.
Thank you. So we'll move on to miscellaneous comments. And one thing that I haven't done a good job of is recognizing employees or talking about our company when it comes to recognition. So there's, I will start adding these things, these comments to this part of the agenda when they come up. Two things I want to talk about tonight. One is yesterday I was with David Milhoff on the APPA called to say that we just will be awarded the award of excellence for current website and social media efforts in in the category that they have compared us to other public power providers and we're receiving an award there. The award will be passed out next month at the customer connection conference. So I'm just letting the board know it well in ahead, well in ahead before any public notices released to the general public and then that award is given to us at that conference. The other thing also associated with APPA is Patrice Townsend, Patrice, if you can come up, please. And this is more employee recognition. So I'd like to again, make sure I cover some of this more frequently. Certainly, you know, I may not capture everything that's done and I don't know that I can capture everything that's done, but when we're getting a recognition from like AWWA, APPA, some of the other organizations we belong to, I think it's it's worth noting employees that are receiving awards there. So Patrice received the a resolution of appreciation, appreciation from APPA for her time served, serving under the smart energy provider program SCP review panel from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty two, the time that she served help assisting APPA and and others during that time there. She began just being a committee member. She was selected to be vice chair of the executive committee from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty one. And last year she served as chair of that of that program. So they mailed in and appreciation plaque. And went to Jeremy Ash. I said I would present it to Patrice tonight. So I do, but I said I would do it during a board meeting so she can probably receive, thank you from me and hopefully others.
I just want to say thank you and I appreciate this receiving this. And it was an honor for me to serve and I want to thank the board and Bill for allowing me that opportunity. So thank you.
Thank you. Jump ahead to not ready, we wasn't ready to put it on the agenda tonight, but I think we're getting closer with our weatherization program. So I did ask Patrice, ask Lori if there's something, even though it may not be finalized by the next board meeting, we'll probably give the board an update on where we are with that. So so yeah, if you want to. So maybe we won't go on next, next board meetings agenda. No, no, go ahead. Go ahead. I didn't know you were ready.
We're close, very close. We've engaged with Habitat KC to perform or coordinate the efforts of the both the energy audits and the updates to energy efficiency. There's a list of things that we'll be covering. And Habitat has done that in the past for other organizations, other cities. And so they're well schooled on how to implement that.
Oh, well, we'll meet with Habitat. We already have the resolution and everything in place. Bill signed it and their representative signed it. So we're meeting next Wednesday to finalize the steps and hopefully November first, we'll start doing some weatherization. We have about sixty houses that we're starting with, so we'll see how that goes and then.
But we we hope that there will be a program that'll continue into next year and beyond.
That's hope.
So Patrice has money budgeted within her department and then we've also, it's been a good ten, eleven years ago when we did the UG and Mark Energy Efficiency Loans, the money we've been holding that money in efforts to continue the program. So we're taking a little bit of that money and adding it to this program. The list of of customers that we're going to first address is because we've got the customer list from the UG for their utility rebate program. So that list is where we're going to start from and we're focusing on the customers who are east of I six thirty five.
With the highest usage, yes.
So we did get some unfortunate news from state of Kansas. So if you can briefly cover that.
They're just not going after the weatherization money. So we can't count on the state for that.
So so the FIS tried to, the federal government tried to allocate more funding to the state of Kansas. And from what I've been able to gather, the state said that they can't manage the extra funds, don't have the wherewithal to be able to make sure that those added added dollars on top of what they're already doing will be properly handled and distributed to our the residents of the state of Kansas.
Senator Haley, I'm not gonna call on you because I know you're under the weather, but
Yeah, I'm making a note.
And I saw that you were, sir.
Follow up and find out.
That's unfortunate.
And if that was uniform for other parts of the other region or are we an anomaly or?
I, that's all I know. I mean, it was, it was, I didn't contact the state director. I, that's all I know. I mean, it was, it was, I didn't contact the state directly. I was gonna talk to you two about, about that before next meeting, because I thought we was gonna cover this next meeting just to kind of see. If you had any insight on, on what a state has refused to accept any more money than what they have because. From my understanding, the money was made available and, and, but it was not accepted.
They just needed to apply for it.
I'm sorry.
They needed to apply for it.
Okay.
And they chose not to apply for it.
Now, is there a cap on how much money per household or is that?
The cap is two thousand per home.
This isn't a, this is not a payback thing like the other program was, the weatherization where we were took out a loan or whatever.
No, this is an actual grant, so after the energy audit come back with the recommended upgrades. Then we will, they will have a contractor to do the work and then we'll pay them after that, but no, it's not a payback thing or a loan. It's a grant.
So Patrice, go over how they're prioritized again. You're using the list from the UG?
Rebate program. East of six thirty-five. With the highest usage.
Highest usage, okay, that's the part I missed. Okay, and of the sixty that are identified, I think you said sixty houses?
There's probably more than sixty that. Six thirty-five, but the funds we anticipate.
That we have, we can do sixty.
If everybody uses two thousand dollars, it'd be about sixty. You know, there are customers that don't need up to two thousand dollars of efficiency updates. And they'll allow the program to go a little bit longer.
And if it's two windows, it's gonna be there. Not gonna take much to get to two thousand.
What we do, like we're not replacing HVACs. We're not replacing windows. We will do.
Coffing and ceiling and Habitat has some programs that they can layer on top of ours. Once we get our cap, they have additional funding that they can layer on top of that.
So do you know if the UG is creating any additional funding?
Not for weatherization.
All right, so we'll, we'll continue. Trying to make sure we have money to support the community to the best of our ability, so. And thought we'd, again, I thought this was gonna be a next board meeting, but thank you for, for being prepared to speak tonight. Sorry about having to deliver the bad news along with it, but. Madam President, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Haley, do you have any comments tonight?
Actually, I thank you, Madam President. I appreciate certainly the, the update that we got on our financials from. Lori Austin and certainly appreciate too the my meter presentation from Jerry and Robert. It was most informative and very appreciated. I was thinking about some of the discussions we've heard. When we heard about the my metering update from other utilities that are giving the option for. Some of their rate payers or some of their clients, if you will, to use or to judge there or to gauge when they. Actually have a higher usage. And so when I was looking at the graph that you brought tonight, Jerry and Robert. I started thinking about if way down the road, that might be something using this technology that is most exciting. That we might provide that we, it might be giving an opportunity for a customer or consumer, especially residential and small business. To help regulate and use during certain areas because of the graph, the, the peak. If they get that drill down that far, so anyway, that's, it's kind of exciting to hear that. And I will be following up for the unanticipated input regarding why weatherization. The state of Kansas has not pushed for additional weatherization. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Roman?
Yeah, I'd just like to say I'm, I'm glad to see that our day's cash on hand went up. That's a very pleasant surprise. That's quite a jump and that was a pleasant surprise. And I also want to thank Jerry and Rob for their presentation. That's an exciting, an exciting. Program that we're gonna be entering into and. I, I think it's the fact that this is just an add-on and we got it, you know, basically for the, the my meter for free. That's even better. So thank you, Jerry, for your hard work and for all your pushing. Bill, thank you for pushing them to push them to get it done and that's all, that's all I have, Bob.
Thank you. My welcome is to be brief. I appreciate the presentation by staff today as usual. So very informed by your staff, thanks for so much valuable information. Secondly, I had three shots yesterday and I'm ready to go home.
Thanks, thanks, Bob. Jeff?
So I was excited to see the my meter presentation. We've all heard customers asking for ease of use when dealing with utility. And like the public, I sometimes get impatient when waiting to see the fruits of our investments that we've made for our community, so. My desire for community training is because I want to see everyone getting the value from this investment. And it looks like it can be a very educational tool for all of us, so thank you for the presentations.
Mary?
Um, I'd just like to say thanks to everybody that did a presentation tonight and Jerry, I'll be. I'll be on the YouTube channel trying to figure it all out. That, that's my, that's the way I figure things out. And I just would like to especially say congratulations to Patrice. And it's not just this particular thing, honor that she got tonight, but if you're out and about in our community. You see her involvement in a lot of different places, so I appreciate all you do for Wyandotte County and the BPU. That's it.
Thanks, Mary. Certainly echo the congratulations to Patrice. Thank you very much for. Your work on, on that as well as all of the other outreach you do in the community. We sincerely appreciate it. You are a phenomenal ambassador for this utility. Jerry, Rob, thank you guys very much for the presentation. I look forward to using the new. I look forward to December, the middle of December when this goes live and I get to use it. Maybe it'll sync up with the text messages at some point as well. And Lori and Patrice, thank you guys for the update on, I know it was an unplanned update, but thank you for the update on the weatherization. That's, that's good news for sure. I do have one request of the board. I have a, a conflict for the second meeting in November on the fifteenth. And I sincerely hate to ask for this to go to the Monday or some day of the Thanksgiving week. And I don't know if that's gonna cause a problem for folks. I am literally traveling for work that entire week, the thirteenth through the seventeenth. I could attend the meeting on the fifteenth remotely, all of it remotely, and I know we will have a long day that day. That is an option for me, but I just want to throw it out there for an alternative. I, I was suggesting possibly the, the Monday, the twentieth for the alternate, for the second meeting in November. I just figured folks didn't want to do it on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving is what I was figuring. That's why I'm asking for Monday. And I know that's odd, so.
What's the date of the normal meeting?
November fifteenth.
You would be available remotely wherever you're gonna be?
Yes, I will sit in a hotel room for five hours on Zoom. Yes, I will. It's, it's work. It's not like, I'm not going anywhere fun, I can assure you.
I'm okay with the twentieth also.
That's okay.
And I'm not sure it'll take me, if you want me to look up the standing committees. Schedule for November, I don't have that on my calendar. So that could be that.
It could be finance. I'm okay on the twenty-first too.
I can do the twenty-first as well, but it sounds like you may not be able to. Okay.
I'll be gone the following week, but I'm in town both of those weeks.
Understood, then that's why. Look, the remote option is available, so just. Wanted to let you guys know in advance. All right, that's all I have for this evening. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, we got a motion, a second to adjourn this meeting. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Mylan. Well, Vanny Henry. Bryant. Gonzalez. Brownman. Haley. That motion carries, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.